It's honor about 7:00 PM and the first item on our agenda tonight is a presentation on our Fair Housing Program. Speaking to this program is Carla Martin. Carla?
How do you name council members, community members? My name is Carla Martin and I work for Community Action Agency here in Athens. Community Action Agency covers Hocking, Athens and Perry Counties. One of the things that we do for Athens City is we are the consultants for the Fair Housing Program. Basically what that means is that we do educational talks. We also advise folks who have problems when they give a call to the agency and we work as a mediator. We also work as a referral service. And just to give you a brief background of what the Fair Housing Program is, it's all the funds come from the community block grant which are federal tax dollars. They're filtered down through the state, through the Ohio Department of Development, and then they're filtered down and Community Action Agency handles the community block grant for Hocking, Athens and Perry Counties, except for Athens City which receives their own community block grant funds. We are a consultant for the city of Athens at this time, although Melissa Knight is actually the administrator of the CDBG Fair Housing Funds. But we do the education and we answer all the questions that folks have when they call the hotline, the 800 number. CDBG has many programs that they offer, but one of the requirements for the CDBG funds is that we do offer fair housing information concerning laws, concerning discrimination, predatory lending and landlord-tenant issues that folks within the community have. When we do fair housing, phone conversations with residents of the community, basically what we say to them is that we establish what the issue is. We sometimes mediate between landlords and tenants, between mortgage companies and those who are trying to buy or sell a home. And there are times when we've had to refer them on because of discrimination issues. We do use Southeast Ohio Legal Services. We also utilize Civil Rights Commission. And if an attorney is required, then we help folks line up an attorney to deal with a landlord-tenant issue. Over the last, from our program, we actually picked up the city of September 1st of 2006. Between September 1st of 2006 and April 1st of 2007, we responded to 13 different requests for assistance. Most of them having to do landlord-tenant issues. Some of them are health issues, some of them are not getting deposits returned, some of them are issues with how to evict a renter, but most of them have to do with landlord-tenant issues. We did have one discrimination issue that is now before the Civil Rights Commission and that's pretty much what we do. As far as fair housing goes, it is a program that the federal government established in 1964 with the Civil Rights Act. It was later changed and various laws were added to it. It has since the '70s become a force within the communities of the three counties that we deal with, as well as across the nation. It is to guarantee that people have a right to rent, buy, sell any place of residence and that they are protected by federal as well as state laws. The fair housing laws cover any familial status, which means those with children or without children, single or married. It also covers racial issues and you cannot discriminate because of somebody's race, you cannot discriminate against somebody because of their sex, whether they're male or female or whether they have a handicap. Neither can you discriminate against them because of their color, their religion or their nationality. So those are some of the things that we deal with as far as discrimination goes. And for the most part, I must say that Athens City really hasn't, that we've seen, hasn't had any major problems with discrimination. As I said, we've only responded to one discrimination act at this time. We also cover the three counties, Hocking, Athens and Perry Counties, and that's a part of our region. It's just that right now we're also a consultant for Athens City. There are packets that I've passed out or that actually Deborah has, so if anybody here would like one of those packets, we do display our goods, our materials that show what the laws are in various public places around the county as well as around the city. Mostly it's at the courthouse. We don't do much in the city building because there's not a lot of traffic in and out. But we have an 800 number in there. There's also several other referral numbers that you can utilize. The packets contain in them an overview of what we do at Community Action. It also contains a pamphlet that talks about the various laws and about discrimination. It includes a brochure and then some little goodies inside your little garbage bag that we've given you. We are available to speak and we do various talks and educational programs throughout the year. Our year runs from September 1st to August 31st. Does anybody in the group have a question at this time? If there are any issues, you do have a question?
Well, okay, just for information's sake, you have a website? I see it's on your pad here. Can you tell everybody?
What, you mean about a website?
Yes.
Well, our website deals mostly with our agency. Fair Housing is a portion of that. But the website, you can go to the website and all it'll do is refer you to the phone number. For the most part, when folks have an issue with a landlord or have an issue in trying to purchase a home or sell a home or have an issue with somebody who's renting from them, talking to them generally calms them down. We're able to collect data, we're able to refer them on with, you know, a clear, "Now I need you to sit down with me and what we're going to do is we're going to write out events, dates this occurred, phone calls you made. Did you give this the information in writing? Did you keep a copy for yourself?" That type of thing. When it comes to predatory lending practices, that's an ongoing program that we deal with because we also do a lot of housing issues with the agency itself. And a lot, some of our housing issues have to do with helping folks get low interest rate loans in order to purchase their first home. So when it comes to predatory lending, all communities I think are suffering from that right now. And there are laws protecting folks who are trying to get a mortgage. For instance, a phone call I had not on ago had to do with somebody was trying to get a mortgage. They were having problems because they were, the only thing the mortgage company was saying to them is that "We've turned you down because your credit rating wasn't exactly what we thought it ought to be." A mortgage company has to be more precise than that and has to tell you exactly why you've been turned. What is it about your credit rating that they turned you down? And the other one is obviously high interest rates, you know, because one of the things we do is work as an advocate for low-income folks and help them find a mortgage that they're going to be able to pay and they're not going to damage their credit any further. The other thing that we do is credit counseling so that we help them build up good credit over a period of several years and several classes that they attend. So one of the things, you know, with the Community Development Block Grant is that it's to alleviate blight in communities, you know. Unfortunately, we live in Appalachia and so a lot of our communities, especially the outlying regions, Athens has its own blight. I'm certain that you could point out neighborhoods to me. I'm not a resident of Athens. I'm a resident of Hocking County right now. But I grew up here, you know, so I am aware. And, but when, there are many communities, especially in Perry County and in the outlying regions of Athens County, that are, that are suffering terribly. And so folks are losing their homes, folks are having a rough time getting the opportunity to purchase a home. And that's one of the things that we've made a, I guess a cause for us, is that we do believe that people have a right to own homes. We do believe they have a right to good credit standing and to get the lowest interest rate possible. And we work with several different programs through the federal and state government in order to assist them in those loans. We also do rehabilitation to homes, which helps folks out too. So they're able to buy an older home, but then through some federal dollars that we're able to find or state dollars that we're able to find, they're able to renovate that house so they can move into it and it is a livable, comfortable home for them that they can reside in for a number of years.
You said, you had cited a number of cases between 9/6 and 4/7. How many was that again?
Thirteen. I have the exact breakdown. We had, we had unhealthy environmental calls. Most of them were landlord-tenant issues.
Okay.
That have to do with getting your deposit back, that have to do with landlord attempting to evict somebody illegally. Landlords who call up who say, "I need to evict somebody. How do I do it?" You know, "I need to know what I need to do in order to go about this." Another problem that we have a lot of times is unannounced visits. Landlords have to give 24 hours notice and it has to be a reasonable timeframe in between visits. We get a lot of calls from people who are landlords who are trying to sell the rental unit. And so they bring around prospective buyers and when they bring those buyers around, what occurs is they kind of show up, you know. And I had one woman who called and in the period of, in a 36-hour period, the landlord had shown up with a total of 11 different potential buyers to tour her home that she was living in and unannounced. So there are issues like that that we deal with a lot and those, of course, can be resolved mostly through mediation, through a quick phone call to the landlord and say, "Hey, I don't know if you're aware of this or not, but these are the state laws, these are the federal laws." And, you know, you have to give notice. You have to give 24 hours notice. The only time a landlord doesn't have to do that is in case of an emergency. You have a gas leak, the water main broke and they've got to get into the house immediately, you know, to shut off the main. That type of thing.
Now, I'm aware of the, there's a student advocacy that, for the Ohio University students. Do you get referrals from them or do you interact with them a lot or a little bit?
Well, the housing program at Ohio University covers students who are residing in Ohio University-owned or administered housing.
Okay.
We do get student calls at the agency and one of the first things we have to establish is, "Do you live in student housing? If you live in student housing, you have a housing authority at Ohio University." And pretty much, we don't want to step on their toes because they deal with landlords all the time. But then the students who are renting, you know, out in the county or out in the city that are renting from local folks who own the homes and sometimes, you know, the results of what we tell them that's legal or not legal, that's make them very happy, but sometimes, you know, it makes the landlord happier than them and sometimes it's the students that are happy in the end. But most of our calls, other than I said we do have one discrimination case that's now with the Civil Rights Commission, but most of our phone calls through explaining what the laws are, explaining what the parameters are, those, that's how we resolve most of those cases. The other thing we always recommend when somebody calls us is the first question we ask them if they're renting is, "Do you have a lease?" And the majority of folks in this area don't have leases. When you don't have a lease, you're not protected. Neither is the landlord protected. And so there are laws, then it becomes a whole different day-to-day or month-to-month lease that's just an agreement by two people. And so eviction's much easier than it is when there's a lease involved. So that becomes, that, those are a lot of the questions that we get and a lot of the issues we have to deal with because people are suddenly, you know, "My landlord's evicting me," you know. And if you're on a month-to-month lease, landlord has to give you three days' time for him in which to say, "I've decided not to renew your lease next month on the 1st of the month when you normally would pay your rent."
About two years ago, the city council put together a landlord-tenant agreement form. This is really more educational than leasing. The concept there is that it would end up in a zoning code office. And really it was educational, you know, garbage responsibilities, tenant responsibilities and stuff like that. Are you aware of that and have you seen one of those copies or?
That one in particular, I'm not aware if I have seen it, if it was, if I have, I haven't, it hasn't been identified as that to me.
I'm just thinking maybe sometime we should get it to you so you can look at it and make sure it's all, you know, in congruency with what your, you know, your things are. I'm pretty sure it is.
I hope, hopefully you're, you're trying.
It should be.
Look at that.
And as I say, it's more educational, so the concept there is so that the students know what the responsibilities are and what the landlord responsibilities are.
And I have, I get that a lot and I do a lot of educational talks out within the townships. And so I get a lot of township trustees I deal with who are usually landlords. And some of them are landlords to students within the city. And it's like, you know, landlords have rights too. It's not just the renter that has rights. And that's the misconception that occurs often is that this fair housing thing is all for the renter and thus the landlord, you know, has no opportunity to have recourse. That's not the case. And one of the things that, again, I say to landlords, "Do you have a written lease? If you don't have a written lease, then you need to draw up a written lease." In the pamphlet that I've handed out, there is a very, very, very basic lease, that's in there and it's a rental agreement is what it is. But there are laws concerning common areas, you know. If you own a duplex, there are common areas that the landlord is responsible for, there are common areas that the folks who rent the duplex are responsible for. That can also be spelled out in the rental agreement. You know, if it is trash pickup and it's the landlord who's responsible for it and he hasn't had it picked up in three months, then that's a health issue and it needs to be dealt with immediately. Those type of issues, I haven't had the experience, other than the discrimination case, where I've had to call like the health department. Most every call we get, even throughout the three counties, can be dealt with directly with the landlord or with the renter and say, "Look, this is the issue, you know, and landlord, we've been talking, he understands these are his responsibilities, but now you have to understand that your responsibilities are these." And they can be resolved quite easily that way. We do have some issues with some landlords that are in Perry County that we've had some, some struggles with. And I think it's more a thing of lack of knowledge in that landlords don't realize their responsibilities as well as the renters' responsibilities. And I don't think that renters realize they have rights. And that's one of the things, the reasons why we try to get out in the community as much as possible and let them know what your rights are.
Other comments from council members? Ms. Martin, I do know that a couple of, well, more than a couple of years ago, city council added to its list of protected classes sexual orientation. And while I recognize that your brochure goes to a lot of different areas, it does not include that. Is that anything that your office has come across, any one claims discrimination or problems in that regard?
No, not really. I, let me say that because we have an 800 number and our website is easily accessible, people type in like fair housing or they type out housing issues or landlord-tenant issues or something, for some reason our website comes up a lot. And I get a lot of phone calls from other areas. And one of the things we do is we listen to the person, we calm them down, we say, "Now, there is a local consultant in your area. There's somebody who can deal with this locally so you don't have to deal with us so far away." And when you deal locally, you're a little more familiar with the landlords, you're a little more familiar with issues that have happened in the past, you have histories with some landlords. So I have had calls concerning that from the city of Dayton and I had a call from the city of Toledo. I've even gotten calls from Michigan. It's the internet, you know. But, but then we try to redirect them to an area that's closer to where they live because if it comes to a legal issue or a discrimination issue, that, that person's going to have to be dealing with attorneys and it's better that they deal close to home. And again, there are, you know, obviously we would have more of a relationship with you folks than somebody from Cincinnati would probably have. And that would be, and also with Southeast Ohio Legal Services, we have more of a relationship with them than somebody, you know, from, I can't even remember the little town. I got a call from a lady in Michigan and she was an elderly lady, you know, and she just went on the internet and found our number. And I was able through a couple of phone calls to find her local folks that she could deal with. But age discrimination seems to be a big thing. The sexual orientation, like I said, the Detroit or the Dayton and the Toledo issues. And again, those folks were referred not only to the civil rights, but also to their local agents so they could work with them. And again, they're more familiar with, with the attorneys in that area, the landlords in that area, the judges in that area. So they are able to direct them to legal services should they need help with paying for an attorney. They're more able to deal directly with landlords and they may have a relationship with the landlord that, you know, I obviously wouldn't have because I don't live there. So I would say that those issues have not come up so much here as they've come up other places. They may exist and it may be that folks aren't aware that can call us with that type of an issue.
Well, I wouldn't mention in a brochure, you know, that was kind of the point I was making. It is the law in the city of Athens.
Okay.
Clearly it's not the law in the county or Benton or, but if someone would call your office from the city of Athens, you know, I would hope that they would get referrals but, uh...
What are the, what are the laws? What are the specific laws?
Well, we added sexual orientation to our list of protected classes. How many years ago, I remember, Dayton?
Ten?
At least, if not more. So, you know, that's a different group that we also want to protect in this city. You did mention that your one discrimination case was referred on to the Ohio Civil Rights Commission. Do you need to find probable calls or do you decide that there is a fact of discrimination going on before you would refer it on?
Generally speaking, when we get a call like that, we're not attorneys.
Uh huh.
And we clearly state that in the beginning, you know, we're a mediation type of system or a referral system, we're not attorneys. And what we usually do is that if we have a case and we suspect that there's discrimination, the first thing we do is we, if the person needs assistance, you know, in finding an attorney, that's when we call Southeast Ohio Legal Services to see if they're eligible for their services. If not, we recommend that they contact a local attorney. In the process too, though, we also recommend that they call the Ohio Civil Rights Commission. And again, we go through a list of, you know, we need, we need you to recall us, you know, each incident as clearly as possible and the approximate date in which it occurred. Because when you go to present to the Civil Rights Committee, you know, they hear all sorts of things on a daily basis, but if you have your facts down, approximate dates, as precise a wordage as was used or gestures or whatever the issue was, then it makes it easier on not only the attorneys, but it also makes it easier on them to decide whether or not they should pursue this case. And so that's one of the things that we can do here, is that we can say, "When did this occur? What exactly was said? What exactly was done? What made you feel that that was what was occurring? Were there any witnesses at the time that this was occurring? Did you have a friend over? Was there a neighbor nearby? Was there somebody walking down the street when they, did they hear the comments?" What, and after we do this, then we refer them on because then they have sitting in front of them when they call them and say, "This is, you know, I called Community Action Agency, they told me to call you and this is what's happening." And then we follow up to find out what the progress is, whether they did indeed file lawsuits. Are they still investigating? What is going on? Because that also is a way of us keeping a history on landlords or on tenants, you know. And it's a way for us to know that we've had an issue in the past, a history in the past with this landlord. And that, that's where we are kind of in Perry County at this time, has nothing to do with discrimination per se as far as sexual orientation, but it has other issues around discrimination. But in attempting to build that case, you know, we have to have, and people's memories are so fallible. And when your feelings get hurt, you, you tend to, you know, exaggerate what was said. And having witnesses, having somebody with you, whenever you meet with that person, whenever there's an exchange with them, you know, those are the types of things we can advise them in. Get two different people's opinions of what was said or how it was handled, that type of thing. And again, I'm not an attorney, I don't profess to be an attorney. All I want to do is get the facts as straight as possible so when the person goes to present their potential case, they have very clear idea of what it is, what's going on, when it was going on. They usually by that time too emotionally have calmed down a little bit, they're thinking clearer, they can answer questions more concisely when they're asked. And they're more capable of, of working through, you know, was this, was this really discrimination or was this, you know, I got my feelings hurt by a comment that I misunderstood. Generally speaking, people who call with those kind of complaints don't, aren't just getting their feelings hurt, you know.
Number Wild, you had another comment?
I assume this P.O. box right here that you have there, 340, is where we contact you, right? The Housing Consortium?
Right. Right. We're located actually on State Route 550, soon to move to Gloucester.
Okay.
We're moving into the prison.
So you're just, okay, just on 550. Okay. The reason why I was asking, maybe we'll send you a copy of the fair housing with the sexual discrepancy?
That would be great because we could add that to our pamphlets in our reserves.
And the other one would be the landlord-tenant reading that we have, the information we have on that, just so, the leasing that we have, just for educational purposes. Mostly so you can critique and tell us we're, we're off base somewhere. Or just so you know what we're doing here.
I know. Stay in touch.
Other comments from Ms. Martin? Anyone from the audience pushing forward?
I was just going to say that we're going to be speaking about CDBG funding tonight. Actually, the formula grants, which I understand is where your money comes through us to you. So funding we'll be talking about this evening will include a portion which goes to fund this fair housing activity.
We have, yeah, I, CDBG has five or six different, I work for, I'm sorry, but I work for Community Services Development Block Grant. That's actually where the majority of my work, the money comes from. And the CDBG aspect of this, the fair housing aspect, we share with the folks who do the Yeah, the formulas, that's the biggest portion of what we oversee, although we do work in, as a consultant with various, as far as the water and sewage programs and those things that come out of CDBG funding.
Seems like our contract has changed slightly with your organization, hasn't it?
I'm sorry?
Our contract that the city has with your organization to administer this has changed slightly. It seems like in the past you did more than just education. Or do I have this blurred with one or the other?
Maybe Doug Stanley's.
Chips and chiz, maybe.
Different, different agencies. We have, we haven't had this contract, this is the first time we've had this contract in a few years.
Okay.
This year.
We have a new.
Uh huh.
Okay.
Yeah, there was, there was another consulting firm, I believe. I'm new to CDBG. I've only been with the program about a year now, as far as doing this portion of the fair housing, so.
Well, we welcome you. Thank you very much for...
You've been very gracious.
Coming to see us. I guess we'll probably see you in about a year.
Depending on what you decide tonight.
We usually have this presentation about once a year to hopefully get it out to the community also this way.
Well, thank you for having me.
Okay.
Have a good meeting or saving. Good luck in the elections. I don't know if I should have brought that up or not.
A couple of us here will have good luck, we know for sure.
Some of us appreciate that.
New people are really in some scraps.
Give us a call if you have any questions.
Thank you again.
No, you're welcome.
Welcome to Athens City Council. We have just completed our fair housing presentation from Ms. Martin of the Community Action Agency. We are now going on into our 7:30 regular session of Athens City Council. We do, we do have a quorum with six of seven... We do have a quorum with six of seven members present. Member Patterson is away attending to a family emergency. Class is over. Mayor Abel has just joined us. Law Director Hunter found it on a schedule tonight to be with us, so.
I usually am, Bill.
And our council clerk is joining us, so we don't have to appoint a temporary clerk. Welcome, Debbie. The next item on our agenda is disposition of minutes. You have before you the minutes from the regular session of March 5th, the regular session of March 19th, the special session of March 27th and 30th, the regular session of April 2nd, and the special session of April 9th. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes? Motion in the second, several seconds, is there any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the minutes?
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes have been accepted. Communication. Member Phillips?
Mr. President, I have a letter here from some members of ATCOs, which detailing some of the accessibility issues in the Stimson Avenue area near where ATCO is located. Some of those have been addressed in the last couple of years since they first communicated with council. But I've been invited to go walk the area with representatives from ATCO. And anybody who wants to be included in that, I'll be happy to copy the letter and include you in any emails trying to schedule a time to go for a walk with some folks from ATCO. I'm not going to read the whole letter, because it's four pages long.
Are you taking names?
Sure.
I am also in receipt of a letter from William B. Lamb of 196 East State Street that is strongly urging council to initiate a resident parking permit program and declare that the 24-hour rule will not be enforced on days when Athens City schools are closed due to inclement weather. I am not going to read also this letter into the minutes, but it is available to anyone that would like to see it all. Members of council has been given it. And I will ask that the Chair of our Parking Committee read it the night of our next committee meeting that will be handling hang tags, okay?
Yes, agreed.
Thank you. Are there other communications? Yes, number Wild?
I'd like to move to accept the financial reports from March.
Second.
Motion in the second, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The March financial reports have been accepted. Are there any other communications? Reports sent, oh, I guess there is, yet one more. Notice of petition. Let's see, I'm sorry. Council must forward resolution on to the city services that will be provided to, so the county commissioner is no later than Friday, May 25th. We have also the petition for annexation. This is for the Holzer Medical Center site that was discussed at committee meeting the other night. And we do need to forward the resolution on what services would be provided. And that needs to be done by Friday, May 25th? Is that all we need to do with this? Okay. Reports and communications from other elected official, well, Mayor Abel?
I handed out a quarterly financial report two weeks ago, I think, or so. And again, would reiterate that the personnel line in that is a little bit different than some other years because it has an additional payroll, it's happened to have seven instead of the normal six in it. But if anybody wishes to review it more in depth or have some questions about it, just please let me know.
Questions for the mayor? City auditor?
No report.
Law Director Hunter?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of short items to talk to council about. This is the motion to dismiss filed by the lead base paint, one of the lead base paint manufacturers in the lawsuit. So you can see things are beginning to heat up a little bit in that case. The other is that, probably a more interesting note is that I got word today that concerning House Bill, Senate Bill, excuse me, 117, which is the video bill, has been amended or is expected to be amended tomorrow morning. And there is supposed to be, in the amendments, I haven't seen the actual language of amendments yet, some improvement in the language concerning franchising fees, the peg channel issue, and some others. The municipal doesn't view the bill as totally acceptable at this point, but certainly getting a little better than what it was earlier. That saga seems to be the large public outcry by local governments at all levels, seems to be having some effect on that.
Other questions for the law director? Ordinances for third reading. Coordinates 4307 and ordinance amending Athens City Code Title III, Section 3.07.66, powers and duties of the Community Relations Commission. Member Fisher?
Mr. President, I move to adopt ordinance 4307. This ordinance really just tunes the duties of the Community Relations Commission. And it's based on a report by the current group who felt that their role was definitely promoting understanding and respect amongst all who live in the community. And it just eliminates part of their duties, which were, according to the original ordinance, to basically sanction and hold hearings and subpoena witnesses in cases of discrimination, et cetera. And they felt that as volunteers, that wasn't as appropriate a role for them. And also, thanks to the law director, he said that most, there are other agencies that handle the legal aspects of discrimination. Right, Carrie?
Right.
Yeah. So they will continue to talk with citizens, they have a community ties initiative. So this just really tunes the ordinance to be more in keeping with their duties as kind of, you know, goodwill ambassadors and mediating disputes.
Motion in the second to adopt ordinance 4307, further discussion? All those in favor of adoption?
Aye.
Opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 4407, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street between Washington and State Streets from 8:00 a.m. on Saturday, July 21st, 07, to 1:00 a.m. on Sunday, July 22nd, 07, for a family music festival, Boogie on the Bricks, and suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Title VII, Section 7.05.26D, 1, city garage metered parking rates and regulations. Member Flowers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of O 4407. As you stated, this ordinance is closing a portion of Court Street for the third annual Boogie on the Bricks. The event is actually held from 2:00 p.m. to 11:45 p.m., but as any street closing goes, given time before and after the event for setup and teardown. Rick Wasserman, who is the Chair of the Boogie on the Bricks event, did meet with Ray Hazlitt. They went over a security plan and did all of the organizing for the event, and just asking to have the street closed again for this festival.
Further comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 4407?
Aye.
Opposed, the ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 4607, an ordinance amending the 2007 appropriation ordinance. Number Sands?
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 4607.
Second.
This is an ordinance that we talked about in committee at some length. And there are several actions being taken in this ordinance. The first is appropriating $60,000 to the Transportation Fund. That will allow deposit of the ticket monies collected at the community center into the Transportation Fund, where we will be, then it will be transferred to the Lakeview Bus Company who runs this transportation activity. Also, we're appropriating $166,000 to the Parking Garage Debt Fund, $300,000 to the East State Street Debt Fund. And those are amounts that we've already approved, but we had not appropriated them. So this is actually just the appropriation. $60,000 to the Street Fund. And, oh, and that's appropriation to, or the payment of activities dealing with the drainwell closure in the west, near the West State Street well field. And also $2,000 to the General Fund, which would pay for some training of new code officers going to some classes this summer.
Further comments on ordinance 4607? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 4707, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Section 13.44.10, Unnecessary Noise to Accommodate the Relay for Life Event, being held at the Athens County Fairgrounds on May 18th and 19th, 2007, and declaring an emergency. Number Flowers?
Thank you. I move adoption of O 4707. Again, this is an ordinance just requesting that the unnecessary noise ordinance be suspended. This is an event that relies on keeping that participants who walk all night long, keeping them entertained and energized. Way to do that is through music. And that's something that they're requesting that they are able to continue to play music throughout the night. And just, they had written to me and requesting that we suspend the noise ordinance for them to keep their events going.
Further comments? Number Wild?
Again, we put this out to see if there was any concerns, but I have yet to hear any concerns. If the purple signs that are all over the windows around town are any indication, there'll be a lot of turnout. Is that, those are?
I believe so.
Okay.
The RFL signs. RFL, yeah.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 4707?
Aye.
Opposed, the ordinance is adopted. Ordinances for second reading. O 4807, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title VII Traffic Code, Chapter 7.05 Parking Regulations, Section 7.05.22 Parking Meter Rates, Regulations and Penalties. O 4907, an ordinance to rezone property on East State Street from an M-zone to a B3-zone. Number Wild?
We did get a letter from a Mr. Silery about this. Was that, I don't remember that being read into the record, was it?
I did not read it into the record. If you'd like that done, we could do that. Or at least have it added to the record, or I'd be happy to read it.
Is that for Court Street?
Oh, this one, okay. I did the same mistake.
Too many zoning requests at once.
That's twice, folks. Okay, on the third reading, you can ask you up one more time. Other comments on ordinance 49? Ordinance 5007, an ordinance amending the 2007 appropriation ordinance. And ordinances for first reading. O 5107, an ordinance authorizing street paving and repairs. Number Flowers?
Thank you, Mr. President. As council is aware, this is the annual ordinance for the street paving. When we went around on our street tour, Andy, the Director of the Streets, was able to identify some of the areas that deserved priority. And we went through those on the street tour. And as a part of that, including both the primary and alternate, the amount is $450,000 for the street paving. I talked to Andy today to see if he had any other additional updates. What he was able to tell me was he's expecting to start on June 11th, to start with the milling of Court Street and go from there. But of course, that's part of all of the contracting bid. We'll know when the projects are going to happen. But he's expecting to start with the North Court Street milling.
Is Central Avenue expansion included in this?
Not on the preliminary, no. But he's still doing updates to, from what we discussed on the street tour. So I know that that is one that I have emphasized to him that
Thank you.
we would like to see.
Other comments? O 5207, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title VII Traffic Code, Chapter 7.05 Parking Regulations, Section 7.05.26 Regulations of City Parking Garage. Member Flowers?
Mr. President, this is something that we discussed in committee pertaining to changing the time on the meters and correspondence with the money, changing it to the same as the street. So for every quarter you put in the meter in the garage, it'll be for 30 minutes as opposed to 22 minutes, which it is currently set at. I think one of the ideas behind that was to get more cars in off the streets and into the garage, which is in most cases sometimes underutilized. Some of the figures that Carol was able to give me over the phone last night, currently, or in 2006, the income in the parking garage was $178,000. By doing this reduction from 65 cents to 50 cents for every hour, we would produce 76.9%, which works out to be $137,000 income it'll bring in with the change. And with that, we will be able to, we should still be able to pay off the debt in one year, but if need be, we could delay it for one more year for the debt fund.
Member Sands?
But that figure, the 79% would be
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six percent, if the number of cars stayed static.
Right.
But we're doing this because we're hoping to encourage more people to park in the garage rather than on the streets, because they have the advantage of long-term parking rather than having to go back in two hours.
Right, so we're hoping that that'll offset that.
Hopefully would bring it back up.
Right, and also, also with the selling of the passes for the fifth floor. Hoping that that will also mitigate that.
Is that part of the ordinance?
No.
No. But as a
Member Bain?
And I would also note that when we did the last remodel on the garage, we did shift to the higher-priced garage amounts. And so this is returned to the old way, which was always a cheaper garage. And also, if we get those guys who keep going in and taking all the money out of the meters, maybe the price will go up as well. The itinerant, the guys who support themselves by going town to town and going harvesting quarters out of meters.
We hopped those guys.
Several times.
They're in jail.
Several times.
Other comments? O 5307, an ordinance amending ordinance O 14406, authorizing staffing levels for intermittent, temporary, seasonal, full, and part-time employees. Member Sands?
Mr. President, this is an ordinance that we again discussed in committee last week. This would allow the fire department to employ part-time employees at the same rate of pay that is now allowed in the code office, utilities billing, division of water and sewer, and some others, which, other divisions which do employ part-time help. This raises their possibility, is now restrained payment from $6.85 up to $7.50. This increases the range from $6.85 up to $13 an hour to bring it in to the same range as these other departments. Again, this is not appropriating any extra money. It would simply give the fire chief the option to pay up to that amount in order to attract prospective workers.
Other comments? Member Bain?
And it seemed to, I was gone, I had a meeting that started at 7:00, so I missed this discussion. How many, number as needed? I mean, does that mean he can take whatever monies in his budget and add people? I mean, is that the way we want to run the city? And $13 an hour for a seasonal employee? Isn't that a little steep as well?
It may not be seasonal, it could be an intern or a part-time clerical person who
Oh, we're back with a clerical person. Oh, I got it now.
But this, this would come out of the fire department's budget as it exists now. Not any additional.
So out of the regular line, or out of the overtime line, or?
Yep, out of regular.
It was budgeted for the full year, and we've not had anybody in it. The idea here is that we've usually had student help that turnover about every year to two years. What the chief wants to do, as we've had in some other departments, is to have an employee that would be there for a number of years, because there are people looking for part-time employment that is primarily, you know, secretarial in nature. And that's what his goal is, is to find that type of persons like a couple of other departments have.
Oh, I didn't know that was what it, well, okay, so we fought, I mean, one of our big fights was getting rid of the part-time secretary. Now it's back as an intern, right? I'm sorry I wasn't here for the meeting.
It was a full-time secretary.
All right, so, and no benefits on this? Is that right? It doesn't say, it says?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, there's normal benefits. I mean, you've got P E R S on any employee and, you know, workers' compensation and those kinds of things. But you don't have health insurance or vacation or sick leave.
And we don't have, well, we don't have that anyway. But how, I mean, is it right that we would allow an individual department head to set a salary on an intern this way? I mean, it just doesn't seem like it's appropriate, sorry. Well, maybe I'll bring it up next, we have a meeting. Well, maybe I'll bring it up next, so we have a meeting.
We can talk further about it, because I understand, again, this would simply put him in line with other departments which operate the same way.
Well, there are other departments that don't. My department is mine.
And mine.
The law director, the auditor, say within six eighty-five and seven fifty.
I mean, if we're adding one F T E, or half an F T E, is this where we want to do it, is the question, it seems to me.
Again, Nancy, good questions in the, we didn't, no, no, I'm sorry, we didn't have these questions raised at the committee meeting, so we will consider them, and I'll find out more for next time.
That's the reason for three readings. Were there other comments? Ordinance fifty-four oh seven, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Development for a community development block grant for calendar year two thousand and eight, which is the federal fiscal year two thousand and seven. Member Sands.
Mr. President, this is the first of three ordinances which would be authorizing the mayor to submit applications and enter into agreements, and this particular one is an agreement with the Ohio Department of Development for the C D B G block grant, which is the formula block grant that we had just been speaking with the Fair Housing representative. This block grant would, is based, this is a, funds that would come to the city based on a formula which takes into account our low-to-moderate-income population, and we would need to identify a project. A couple suggestions for a project for these funds would be for replacement of the furnace at Arts West, or possibly rebuilding, some refurbishing of the stairway from Fort to Fairview Drives. There will be public hearings to identify these projects on May twenty-eighth and June twenty-fifth, seven o'clock here in council chambers. If, if community members or council members have suggestions for these activities, we'd really like to hear from them at that time.
Other comments? Member Bishop.
I just have a question. Roughly, how much money is this for? Or does it depend on what we want?
Mayor, what do we, what can we usually expect?
It's, it's a form of a set by the federal government, and it's usually around, they could cut it back to about ninety thousand a year.
Okay.
But you have to do, just part of that is, I think bids came in for the Fair Housing contract this year, I think thirty-five hundred dollars has to be paid out of that, and then there's a percentage that goes for the administration of it to pay our overhead costs.
But it can be multiple projects, it doesn't have to be just one, right?
Right.
Okay.
It has to be in a low and moderate-income area of town.
Member Phillips.
I would just mention that I think a couple of years ago, the idea of using some of this to deal with the issues on Stimson regarding the curb cuts was brought up, so I'll toss that out, that we've got another letter now raising that there still are some problems there, that that may be a project we'd want to consider.
Sure. And we did use those funds, the curb cuts that happened.
To help with some of it, yeah.
Other other comments? Ordinance fifty-five oh seven, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to make application and enter into an agreement for the fiscal year oh seven oh eight Drug Abuse Resistant Education Dare Law Enforcement Grant. Member Sands.
Mr. President, this application and agreement would provide up to fifty percent of an officer's salary if that officer is identified as our dare officer, an officer who goes into the local school system and educates students regarding the importance of drug abuse resistance. This is a program that we have participated in for as many years as I can remember on council.
And I. Other comments? Ordinance fifty-six oh seven, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and execute an emergency shelter grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Development, and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Good Works Inc. Again, member Sands.
Mr. President, this application in agreement allows, allows the mayor to, to sign an agreement with the Ohio Department of Development for this emergency shelter grant, and we will act as administrator and pass that grant on to Good Works, which operates shelters, shelters, I believe, within the city of Athens, providing emergency shelters. So the, it is a requirement that a municipality apply for this grant, but we will pass that on to Good Works to, to actually, to expend the funds.
Other comments? Member Bishop.
Because we haven't talked about this a lot, and I think it's an important issue, just so we can raise it again, do you have any idea how many people are sheltered through this, you know, what the need is in this community for homeless?
They're limited by the size of their facility. They'll operate two different types of facilities, so what they've done is do some summer programming, and others at Timothy House. But I think their occupancy is ten or twelve at any one point in time.
Fifteen at Good Works. At Timothy House, it's fifteen.
Right, but the one on Central Avenue, Paul? Okay.
The Hannah House at Lorik Road, I don't know how many are there. That's for the long term.
Right.
But this does not fulfill the need for shelter.
Oh, no, not by a long shot.
It doesn't fulfill all their budget either by a long shot.
No.
No, no, but I, I just think while we have students, et cetera, and everything, to just become aware that this is an issue in the community.
This is?
Homelessness.
Member Wile.
Talking Keith Wassman, I think he says it's the only homeless shelter in the eight-county area. I think he said that. I've been on the Walk-a-thons, and, you know, he can, you go on one of those, he can tell you all the problems that exist and the lack of resources.
Right.
Other other comments? O fifty-seven oh seven, an ordinance authorizing the filing of an application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U S D O T, Federal Transit Administration, F T A, as authorized under federal transit laws as codified forty-nine U S C, Section Fifty-three eleven, financial assistance for other than urbanized areas, and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program and Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program, and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant application approval for the period from January one oh eight through December thirty-one oh eight. Member Flowers, will you be speaking to this? And Member Patterson's absence.
Yes, thank you. This ordinance is, as I spoke to Carol last night, this is annual, this is the O dot funding for the busing system, and I wanted to ask the mayor, since it is a little bit late, do we need to suspend in order to get the application in?
No, I think it, I think it's due July one.
July first, so we'll have plenty of time then. Well, enough time. Okay. But yeah, again, it's just the annual O dot funding for our busing system.
It sounds more complicated.
Right.
I just hope we don't amend it. Other comments on ordinance fifty-seven? O fifty-eight oh seven, an ordinance providing for the issuance of three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars of water system revenue note, tenth, notes, tenth two thousand and seven renewal by the city of Athens, Ohio, for the purpose of paying litigation cost and renewing notes previously issued for the purpose, and declaring an emergency. Member Sands.
Mr. President, as we discussed in, in committee last week, this is a renewal of a bond which we have entered into to, to pay for the costs involved in our settlement of EPA case regarding alleged problems that are near our West Eight wellfields. Right now, our current status with this bond is at about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We'd like to pay down eighty thousand dollars on this. There are, of course, fees involved in that, and so this would be making a payment, reducing our indebtedness, utilizing funds which all of citizens of Athens see monthly on their utility bill as a payment for EPA settlement fund. So utilizing those funds that have been collected, we would pay down from four twenty-five to three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, and as the ordinance suggests, this is the tenth renewal, so at the rate we're going, we still have another four or five years to go before this is paid.
Other comments? Just a point of interest, how much is the dollar on the water bills bringing in?
We collected, the first three months of the year, we collected about seventy-nine thousand.
First three months? So eighty thousand times four.
No, it's, you're in eighty-nine thousand a month.
Oh.
Twenty-nine hundred, maybe.
Because there's only so many customers at a dollar each. I mean, it's based on the recyclable billing units, and that's in the seven, that just will vary each month a little bit as to how the payments come in.
I'm sorry, you're right, I didn't say that right.
Because it's about eighty thousand a year is what we collect, eighty, eighty-two. We have a balance of seventy-nine thousand right now, because it's been almost a year since we last paid on it.
At the end of March, we had about seventy-nine thousand. So we hope by the end of May, we'll have enough to pay the interest on top of paying down eighty thousand.
So about four more times, I think, four or five each. About hit it on the head, don't you? Other comments on ordinance fifty-eight? Announcements and other business? Member Bain.
Mr. President, I'd like to continue our discussion of, as a committee of the whole on the annexation proposal for Holzer. I would also like the clerk to encourage lawyer meek to concentrate not so much on the glories of anything other than, you know, just basically where is the land, and how much is going to be Walmart, and that sort of thing. I've already asked you for that, so. We don't need to, you know, I mean, I don't want to enter into the discussion that's been in the newspaper about private nonprofit, it's not my issue. My only issue is, where is it, and how does it relate to what we have? That's all I want to know.
Member Wile.
Environment Committee, I'm going to have John Buck of the A E P show up, he'll say, give a report, as he did last year, maybe bring up some other topics as well he can address.
Member Phillips.
Mr. President, I'm going to need a planning and development committee meeting to talk about the rezoning that everybody keeps wanting to talk about. And then, I, I met with the local government committee of the chamber, and they requested that our discussion about site plan review happen on a separate night around the table, so it's, it's more of a dialogue. So I'm looking at a possible date for that, and I was wondering if anybody had a problem with scheduling a planning and development committee meeting on Tuesday, May twenty-second, at seven o'clock, so that we could have just a focus on that issue and a more open discussion without a whole lot of other things on the agenda.
So would that just be the chamber and us?
No, no. Anybody who wants to be part of that discussion. The way we had the meeting for Herald Square.
Well, then there was one or two interested parties, but I mean, this may have, I just wondered. Okay.
I'm sorry, what time do you say?
Seven.
Okay.
Okay.
It's May twenty-second?
Mm-hmm.
About this under the table, member Sands.
Mr. President, we'll have a, I'd like to have a finance committee meeting, possibly to discuss some of the questions that were raised in tonight's meeting, and other issues that might come up.
Member Flowers.
Transportation Committee to discuss hang tags, sidewalks, including Stewart Street update, and bicycle safety subcommittee update.
Member Bishop.
Now, I don't know if this is going to happen, but I'm just alerting you that there will be another discussion of Halloween page, the lost, some convention visitors group does want to come in and make a report. I don't know if it's next month, but I just want to alert people to that.
Member Bain.
I was going to applaud Debbie for having a separate meeting. I do think hang tags and Halloween, initial discussions ought to go on a separate night, so we don't all end up being brain-dead and strung out. Would you consider that?
Having it on?
Either hang tags and Halloween.
Well, it's not an initial discussion, but yeah, we can have it on a separate night since it will take.
Well, I think it is, and I mean, I think that?
Well, it's not, I mean, it's been discussed before, it's not like this is?
Well, the question is where, and the question is how.
Sure, yeah, we can do it on a separate night.
And the people on the east end also have a series of plans that they've been working on with respect to their neighborhood. We don't know where they are.
Right, well, I was at that meeting, and?
I know, so, you know, don't they need to be heard as well? Because some of the issues will impinge on their plans, I do believe, at least, if you're going to go ahead with, as you, somebody said, maybe Carol said, Morris Avenue.
Sure, we won't have it on the agenda then.
Actually, do you want to have a conversation about hang tags?
Well, next week, no.
We did have one, but nobody showed up.
Next Monday, six o'clock is the second meeting of the open-to-everybody bicycle safety subcommittee meeting in the mayor's conference room, six P M, next Monday. So no hang tags next Monday, but sidewalks and bicycle safety.
Member Wile first.
I just wanted to remind you that we're going to have a subcommittee meeting for bicycle safety. Amy covered it already, sorry.
Member Sands.
My question regarding that, what, is there a specific agenda that we're, or is this an open discussion?
This is a subsequent meeting of our last meeting that we had to work through some of the stuff that we discussed last time, with updates and more maybe concrete information in terms of what directions the committee, subcommittee is going to start taking, and how it falls into the transportation task force as a comprehensive issue.
Any other announcements or other business?
Could we clarify for everyone when Halloween is going to be discussed, so we don't have a long Holzer meeting and a long blah-blah meeting and end up here till?
Yes. I do not know when the report will be ready.
So when it's ready, then we will schedule.
I will, I will.
But not next Monday unless it looks like the schedule isn't so.
Right, but I just wanted to let people know that this was going to happen.
Okay. Last item on our agenda before adjournment is an opportunity for citizens to speak on any legislative items or city services that have not been covered on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone wishing to address council tonight?
Yes, sir.
Please. The rules provide that you state your name, your address or affiliation, and you're welcome to talk to us for three minutes.
Okay, my name is Robert Bean, I live at Ten Walker Street, and my object is, I want the city to cut down a big walnut tree that's in the alley on the west side of the cemetery over there, off of State Street.
You want it cut down, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
I've addressed the tree commission about it, and they said there was no heavy traffic, truck traffic down the alley, so therefore, they denied it. But the tree is pushing the alley two and a half feet over onto my property. They don't know what the whole deal is. The alley is only ten feet wide, and the tree is in the alley, and it's taken up two and a half feet of the alley. I would like to have it cut down.
Rick, could we ask the administration to take a, a look at it and tell us, and what the commission's viewpoint is, and let us know what your opinion is, or do you have an opinion?
I don't have one yet, because I hadn't heard about it.
Neither had we, sir, but we would like an opportunity to go out and take a look at this tree, and see what it is doing, and talk with the tree commission.
The code has looked at it, and they, they agreed with me, they measured it off and whatnot, that the tree isn't, it's a healthy tree, it's growing, but it is a twisted tree, so it's not a perfect tree, but what it's doing is taking up two and a half feet of the alley, and the alley's only ten feet wide, and it could stand some dust control on that alley as well, because they're kicking up a lot of dust back here now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for bringing to us your concern. Member Wile, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I did make the last, well, I did make the last tree commission, but I noticed in the minutes they decided not to cut this down, but I wasn't present at the meeting.
Okay, maybe we could get a copy of the minutes and see what their discussion did.
Okay. It's probably, I think it's playing on T V, too, so you can always watch it if you want.
Maybe we can take a look at it at next week's committee meetings. Is there any, anyone else wishing to speak before council? Seeing none, and having addressed all, oh, one other very important announcement. Tomorrow is election day. Polls will be opening at six thirty, and they, six thirty A M, they do stay open till seven thirty P M. Board of Elections for any info. Board of Elections for any info. Please vote. See you there.